Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2019. My name is Ashley Robinson and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language Interpreter. The following legislation will be introduced by City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill 1508, A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Gabriel Dispress and His Attorney Timothy P. O'Brien Esquire in an Amount Not to Exceed $77,500.0 in Settlement of Federal Litigation. Bill 1509, A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in a Total Sum of $95,000 payable as follows: $1,287.0 in favor of Allegheny County Central Tax Collection District; $37,485.20 in favor of the Law Offices of Joel Sansone; $56,277.80 in favor of Dawn DeFelice Giacomo's in Full and Final Settlement of a Labor Relations Case. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill 1510, A Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Melons Orchid at St. Station Street and Euclid Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15206. Bill 1511, A Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 800 Penn Avenue Apartments Project, which will involve the conversion of the eight-story office building into seven floors of apartment units with the street level being used as retail space. The building address is 800 Penn Avenue, Pittsburgh 15222 in the Second Ward. Bill 1512, A Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Thunderbird Cafe Project located at 4045, 4049, 4053, 4055, and 4065 Butler Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15201. Bill 1513, A Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Aylesboro Town Homes along Aylesboro Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15217. Bill 1514, A Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 21st and Smallman Mixed Commercial Development Project. The existing buildings will be or have been demolished and new buildings will be a mixture of restaurant, retail, and office space. Parking will be provided via a three-level parking deck over existing surface parking. The site is located on the north side of Smallman Street between 21st and 23rd Streets, Pittsburgh 15222. Bill 1515, A Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 209 Ninth Street Apartments Project, which will involve the conversion of the nine-story office building into nine floors of apartment units with the street level being used as retail space. The building address is 209 Ninth Street, Pittsburgh 15222. Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill 1516, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a license and maintenance agreement with Just Ducky Tours, Inc., for the use of property located at the Monongahela Wharf Landing. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 1517, A Resolution Approving the Appointment of Five Members of the East Liberty TRID Revitalization Authority Board of Directors, Council District 7, 8, and 9. Bill 1518, A Resolution Appointing James R. Barry, Jr. as a Commissioner of the Shade Tree Commission of the City of Pittsburgh for a term to expire March 31, 2021. Bill 1519, A Resolution Appointing Jamie R. Holloway as a Commissioner of the Shade Tree Commission of the City of Pittsburgh for a term to expire March 31, 2021. Bill 1520, A Resolution Appointing Brian J. Wallniak as a Commissioner of the Shade Tree Commission of the City of Pittsburgh for a term to expire March 31, 2021. And Bill 1521, A Communication from Jennifer Olzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on Behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Ian O'Neill per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June This concludes the reading for Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Welcome to the Regular Meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, Mrs. Strasburger, Mr. Kraus, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? We ask that you would please remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you know what? I apologize. We have special guests here this morning that are here to present the Pledge of Allegiance. They're guests of Councilwoman Harris. I apologize for my faux pas. Please come up. You guys made the trip. We have to make sure you come up and do this, okay? Yep. And this way you won't be on TV if you're right here. All right? Okay, I apologize. We're going to reboot. Okay? Ready? All right, let's go. I...
(Inaudible) the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good job, guys. Thank you very much. Councilwoman? Yep. Is this your proclamation also, Councilwoman?
No.
Okay. I have Building Bridges here.
(Inaudible) It's a different proclamation. It's different. No, it's the same proclamation, but it's different people.
It's Building Bridges, Councilwoman. Are your guests going to stay or should we have them sit down?
Yes.
Okay, all right, guys, you're going to stay with us, okay?
Things mixed up here this morning, but... Okay, let me make sure we all say who we are today. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas five African-American teens from the cultural group such as..."
Darlene.
Okay, where's my staff? Where is the other one like this? Each group gets one?
I think there's only one proclamation, Miss one, Council.
Oh, okay, this is just...
The pledge, yep.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So would you like your guests to stay or shall we have these two?
No, 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 I want to make sure everybody knows who each one of them are today. I don't want to grade you. It's okay. All right, we tell everybody who you are and what grade you're in.
My name is Kayla Ng, and I'm in first grade.
My name is Sharon Johnson and I am in first grade.
My name's Asia Anthony and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Trinity Brookins and I'm in second grade.
My name is Haley Castana Garcia and I'm in third grade.
My name is Sahil Gupta and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Finn Schaefer and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Phoebe De Silva and I'm in third grade.
My name is Anna Minton and I'm in third grade.
My name is Alessandra Aguata and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Emile White and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Maddox Sly and I'm in second grade.
My name is Trenton Stook and I'm in third grade.
Okay?
Hey, can we have the teacher?
Do you want a picture, Councilwoman?
My name is Geraldine Brown and I'm a teacher's aide.
I'm Rhonda Parker Savin and I'm at EA3 at Pittsburgh-Allegheny.
Thank you, we can have a picture, but this little one needs to get in the front row. You too. So tiny. Before everybody sees you, a picture. Michael. Thank you. And this is Allegheny Elementary and Middle. It's the fifth grade, start in the middle. Okay, they're all elementary K through five. So thank you all for coming today.
Thanks, everybody.
And so we have the little...
Madam Clerk, do we have the buttons that say I said the pledge? Oh, you have them?
They all have buttons already, yeah.
Oh, you've got City Council buttons.
Oh, City Council buttons. We don't have one.
I don't think they're down there, Madam Clerk.
Not here.
We may be out of them. But you've got City Council pins. Those are really good ones. Well, Councilwoman, I guess we can have your guests take a seat and we'll get the buttons and we'll pass them out. How's that?
Great.
Thanks, everybody.
(Inaudible). Yeah, here it goes. The next one. I got it. Sorry, it's been a busy morning. Okay, would all those come from Northview Heights? Is that the group that I have? Come on up. You're going to have to help me with some of these names today. This is our Building Bridges group from Northview. Some of you down here and some on the steps. Okay, you smaller, come on down. Okay, we have everybody. And whereas African teens from the cultural group such as the So... Okay, the Somali, but I need the rest of it. They wrote it out here. Okay, Somali, Brugan. Sali Bantu, Ndi Ameni, Gridland. Gridland? Korindian. And Tasnini, am I saying that right? Okay. Sorry. And five African-American teens from Pittsburgh, former collaborative project called Building Bridges, Welcoming Strangers. The name of the teens are, and I'm going to pass that over when we get to that part. And whereas this group of teens whom live in Northview Heights have come together to share personal stories of African and African-American teens and adults. They are sharing these stories through digital storytelling in collaborative with Sharing Our Story Center of Life and Pittsburgh Playback Theater. Digital storytelling is a way for people to tell individual stories through visual, which allows for discussion of complex topics. And whereas the mission of this program is to share their cultural stories in order to reduce barriers, build mutual understanding, and develop empathy. These ten teens met every Saturday in February to discuss which lessons they wanted to share with the community. With some assistance, the volunteers, each teen compiled and edited materials to create a three-minute documentary. These documentaries include significant events that occur in their life. And whereas with the changed generation coming, changing culture, and how to express and receive, the Digital Storytelling Project helps to share stories while bringing community of different cultures, of creating a welcome environment for immigrants and refugees. And whereas, there will be five dates where the teens' stories are shared with Building Bridges Welcoming Strangers event. They engage all audience through digital storytelling, musical performances, and approved theater. And now there'd be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, March 23, 2019, Sunday, March 31, 2019, Thursday, April 4, 2019, Sunday, June 9, 2019, and Thursday, June 20, 2019, to be Building Bridges Welcoming the Stranger Days in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you, congratulations.
I came to Pittsburgh when I was seven years old, but I am a helper with this digital storytelling. I was helping out, helped Sally organize some of this stuff, get everybody together.
My name is Sally Rafson and I'm the lead of the Sharing Our Story and the Digital Storytelling Project. I was born in Pittsburgh and live in Pittsburgh.
I'm Andy Fishoff. I'm a volunteer with the project.
I'm Jared Gustafson. I intern with the project and I'm also from Pittsburgh.
My name is Ali and I'm a junior at Alderweireld High School.
My name is Hassan Abde and I'm in 12th grade. I go to school, Bishopshire High School.
My name is Tasha O'Hern and I go to Perry High School.
Okay, so we have a great group of people here and it would be so nice if Council could show up at one of the dates where the storytelling is going on. It's very, very interesting. When the Somali community came to Northview Heights and I went up and they had no one to be able to talk, you know, and explain what the Somalis are saying to those African-Americans from Pittsburgh. So we have a group here now that really cares and it's a wonderful program and I think it should be shared around the city of Pittsburgh. So thank you all for what you're doing. I know you're not all here today, but I have some proclamations for you to take back for each of the people that are involved. And I will be at your program. I just have to leave these because I was... Right on the side there. I'll sign them. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Madam Clerk, if you would please, we have two to be read into the record, one from Councilman O'Connor, one from myself, Councilman Kraus. Yes, please. Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, March 22, 2019, to be Hugh Brandon Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Also, Councilman O'Connor presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of March 2019 to be Multiple Myaloma Action Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. That concludes the proclamation portion of our council meeting and will take us into public comment. Of course, anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning will have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this time to remind everyone that the rules of council clearly state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are at this time or could at another time come before our council. We do not permit profanity. We will maintain order at all times. I ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. When the green light comes on, it will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time has expired. Good morning, Ms. Brown, welcome.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. For the young people that live up in the Northview Heights, that's where my family lived for many, and quite a few of them still up there. They were the Wade family. You might not know them, they're older, but that's where they lived. And for years I had been coming to City Council asking the mayor to please put police up there. Now, the main reason why I was asking is when they were killing. I said if they had killed someone, then the police was supposed to be there that night and for two days in a row, every apartment, asking everybody, don't wait till two or three weeks later and you come back and you find out something because they're going to kill the people that told you. The mayor, thank you, Mayor Paduto, because he did, I found out that they did put a police station up there for you. I've come down here for over twenty-something years, young fellows, and I'm coming down to speak for you. I'm speaking for you because as being dark, you're never above suspicion. You're never above suspicion. Now, they were talking about the lawyer, that they shot up his place. That was wrong. But that little weasel, and I call him a weasel, and the reason why I call him that is when I went to, was going to community college and I took public speaking, I had a professor that was so proud of her and how she taught the lawyer how to play towards the people. The lawyer was for the son who had killed his father, who was the chief of police, but he was able to take and sway it. That's what this lawyer did. Because in the first place, I'm not a lawyer, but why would you just say that you're going to charge him with first-degree murder and that means premeditated? That means he planned it. There was something wrong with the lawyers that we get for the black people because you don't think like he does. But he played to the game. I've seen it with Johnny Gammage. He, the white people, and then, "I do honor, I can't use this." It was the smallest room in the courthouse I know it had to be. So they know how to do it. Please understand, no matter what he did, Antoine did, he still was a human being. And understand me, when I saw him fall, I bust out crying, I said, "He's been assassinated." And that's what he was. In Florida, they are not allowed to shoot anybody that's running. The woman told me, they shot a man, they asked him, "Why did you shoot him? You know where he live?" He said, "Yeah, we know where he live." They're not allowed to shoot if you're running and it should be in this state too. My father told me years ago, he was down south, down south, and he said you get treated better down south because you know where you stand. They smile in your face here and they lie behind your back.
Thanks, Ms. Brown. Okay, now we have our next speaker there. Okay, good morning, Mr. Ludwig.
Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Les Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemore Street. Been there since 63. The passage of time, but it works. But what we have is a misunderstanding of what's going on in our society and the passage of time, so I came to talk about it today. We think we've got a problem that's new. Oh my God, somebody's paying money to get their kid into school. Seventy-five years ago, I became aware that the Fox family of southwest Philadelphia paid $10,000 under the table to get their son, Donald, into medical school. So therefore, it's not a new problem, it's an old one. It's been going on in series if you were a WAP Italian, pardon me, or you were Jewish, God forbid. Could you actually get into one of those schools that you wanted to go to that some of these young people wanted to go to? And then the 194th class of Central High School, there was an African-American that actually did the miracle. Walt Pennell, who played on the football team successfully, actually went on to become a doctor. And he was an African-American. Jeez, does anybody know how much was paid under the table back then, seventy-five or more years ago? And who knows how much farther back the problem goes? Instead of looking at each other and saying, "Here, come and make a contribution, put your energy into something positive," instead, what do we have? We have what we're looking at, a problem. Mr. Bowder, I attacked the hell out of him when I ran for mayor. He got to the point, he couldn't stand it, so he came over and he told me to hell off. And then he came days later and put his head down and said, "I apologize, go see the editor." And that editor said, "Oh, it came..." Go see the editor. And that editor said, oh, it came down from above. Well, how much more above can you go than that editor, except the owner of the paper?
Thanks, Mr. Ludwig.
So I was the subject of that discrimination.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Thank you.
I thank you.
Okay, good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Bill Suvarin Carrick, Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2020, globalintelligencesociety.org. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is the rules of council. Roman numeral one, section three, quote, "No rule of the council shall be amended or changed except by a majority vote of the members and after one week's previous notice to council in writing of such change desired." Did you district representatives receive from Mr. Kraus in writing a change to Roman numeral three, meeting section four, part C, subpart one regarding public comment to say, quote, "We do not permit profanity," WDNPP? I claim one, there is no evidence that Mr. Kraus provided a desired anti-profanity change in the Pittsburgh City Council rules to the district representatives in writing. Agreed? Agreed. Uh did you district representatives vote on an anti-profanity addition to the rules of council? I claim two, there is no evidence that Mr. Kraus held a council vote on an anti-profanity change to the rules of council. Agreed? Agreed. I claim three, A, that WDNPP has never been acted, enacted legally and added legally to the city of Pittsburgh rules of council. B, that telling the Pittsburgh city, Pennsylvania state, USA national publics that WDNPP is a lie. And three, C, that on this Pittsburgh rule of council regarding public comment and saying WDNPP, "We do not permit profanity," Mr. Kraus is a liar.
Yes.
Mr. Kraus, do you think that I, Ronaldin Miller, am telling the truth in claiming one, two, three, A, B, and C? Mr. Kraus, do you dispute these claims? Mr. Kraus does not dispute RLM's claims. Mr. Kraus does not disagree, therefore, that he is telling the publics a lie, WDNPP, and therefore is constraining public comment speech. Yet, Mr. Kraus persists in telling us that we do not permit profanity. Either Mr. Kraus lacks sufficient intelligence to remain in office as president of council because he does not know that his handling of the necessary procedure to add WDNPP to the rules of council is not legal and that asserting the anti-profanity prohibition is an untrue act. Or, Mr. Kraus lacks effective enough informational psychological integrity to be president of council because he does know that he, that his anti-profanity information is founded on a false autocratic act by him alone and that saying so violates the US and Pennsylvania constitutional guarantee of freedom of speech. Do you councilors agree or not agree?
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Thank you for being here. Okay, uh may we have our next speaker, please? May we have our next speaker, please? Anyone else wishing to speak before city council this morning? Okay, seeing no further speakers then, excuse me, we'll move on to presentation of papers. We begin with our Chair of Finance and Law, Councilman Burgess.
President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number 1508, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Gabrielle Despress and his attorney in an amount not to exceed $77,500 in settlement of federal litigation. Bill number 1509, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the total sum of $95,000 payable as follows. 1287, in favor of Allegheny County Central Tax Collection District. $37,485.20 in favor of the law offices of Joel Sanson. $56,227.80 in favor of Dawn Deflee Jacobus in full and final settlement of a labor relations case.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 1510, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Melons Orchard at Station Street and Euclid Avenue. Bill number 1511, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 800 Penn Avenue Apartment Project, which will involve the conversion of the eight-story office building into seven floors of apartment units with the street level being used as a retail space in the second ward. Bill number 1512, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Thunderbird Cafe Project. Bill number 1513, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Aylesboro Town Home along Aylesboro Avenue. Bill number 1514, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 21st and Smallman Street Mixed Commercial Development Project. The site is located on the north side of Smallman Street between 21st and 23rd Street in the second ward of the city. Bill number 1515, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 209 Ninth Street Apartment Project, which will involve the conversion of the nine, nine-story office building into nine floors of apartment units with the street level being used as retail space in the second ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman?
Uh yes, I have a motion to waive Rule 8 on 1513.
Okay, and we have a second. Do we have discussion on the motion to waive the rules on Bill 1513? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Councilwoman?
I just wanted to know what the changes were.
No, no, this isn't the amendment, Councilwoman. This is a waiver of rules on 1513 so that it may appear on tomorrow's standing committee.
Okay, so it's not the amendment.
No, we'll take that amendment up at final action. Okay, thank you. Uh then, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Uh waiver of rule passes and 1513 will be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Councilwoman Mikael Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, Councilwoman. How are you today? Good.
I don't have any letters for you today.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill number 1516, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a license and maintenance agreement with Just Ducky Tours, Inc. for the use of property located at the Monague Hala WAF landing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Councilwoman for Councilwoman Strasburger.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair does have a number of papers. First, I would like to begin with the appointments of uh uh the Board of Directors to the East Liberty Tribe Revitalization Authority. And those are here, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kraus presents Bill number 1517, Resolution Approving the Appointment of Five Members of the East Liberty Tribe Revitalization Authority Board of Directors, Council District Seven, Eight, and Nine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is the first time we have received appointments this way. It does require approval of council, so I would entertain from members a motion to interview if they wish. Councilwoman Gross.
We don't have the names.
Uh we do. Uh they are in there. Can you read the names, Madam Clerk? They're in the bill itself.
One moment. Okay, the, this, the name title in terms of office for first members of the Board of Authority are as follows. Robert Rubenstein, Scott Kunka, Dennis Devine, Ronald Joseph, Wendy Stern. Yep, that's a five.
Okay.
And do you have the terms, you said? Are they all the same term or are they rotating terms? Or how long is the term?
I believe those are spelled out in the original legislation.
See, one moment.
Could we hold for interview and ask those questions then?
Okay. So Robert Rubenstein, term five years. Then we have Margaret Lanier, Treasurer, Director of Finance, term five years. Lance Chimka, term five years. Ronald Joseph, term five years. Dan DeBorne, term five. And the only add was Margaret Laniers.
I'm sorry, but I'm confused. These are di- a different five, some of them are different five names than you just read.
It's women. I can't hear you.
Different names. Some of the names are the same. Some of the names are new names.
I think the only name that I add additional was Margaret Laniers is what's in the body. Uh and then-
Should we just hold for um-
Yeah, yeah, we just have what they presented to us, the administration, and I have-
Instead of the clerk.
Yeah, Robert Rubenstein, Scott Kunka, David Devon, Ronald Joseph, and Wendy Stern is what's on the legislation.
Okay, maybe you just said them, pronounced them differently the second time. Uh so yeah, I'm happy with holding for interview. Second?
Yeah.
That was a motion then. Motion to hold for interview.
Okay, so Councilwoman Gross motions to hold for interview. Councilwoman Harris, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed abstentions. Thank you very much. Uh and we will hold these for interview and I'll work with the clerk to set that up and the representatives of the council district. Uh next, we have three appointments to the Shade Tree Commission, which also requires council approval.
Bill 1518, Resolution Appointing James R. Barry Jr. as a Commissioner of the Shade Tree Commission of the City for a term to expire March 31st, 2021. Bill 1519, Resolution Appointing Jamie R. Holloway as a Commissioner of the Shade Tree Commission of the City for a term to expire March 31st, 2021. Bill number 1520, Resolution Appointing Brian Woolenikat as a Commissioner of the Shade Tree Commission of the City for a term to expire March 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What is the desire of council? Councilwoman Harris?
I'd like to make a motion to interview.
Okay, may I have a second on the motion?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have discussion?
I just want to thank Chief of Staff Gilman because he has really been moving a lot on a lot of these appointments and filling up some of these commissions committees, so I just want to thank him.
Yep, thank you. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Seeing none. Uh we will work with the clerk's office then to schedule these three appointments to the Shade Tree Commission for interview. And then finally, I have a communication from our Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget. I believe we just need to read, receive, and file, correct?
Yep. Bill 1521, Communication from Jennifer OZinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for an Ian O'Neill per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
So move.
Second? Do we have discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much. Uh we now move into unfinished business and with no unfinished business before the council, we will proceed into reports of committee for final action. And as is our tradition, we will begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Reverend Counsel, Reverend Ricky Burgess, Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill number 1505, Reported Committee on Finance and Law for March 20th, 2019 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1438, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in favor of William J. Miller Jr. in an amount not to exceed $21,720.51 for arbitration services rendered in connection with the city of Pittsburgh and FOP Act 111 Interest Arbitration Award. Bill number 1439, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 738 for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total cost $70,000 to $220,000. Bill number 1472, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Pittsburgh Penguins Foundation of $156,420 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill number 1473, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to submit a Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund Grant Application to the Pennsylvania Office of Commonwealth Libraries for the renovation of Carnegie Library, a Pittsburgh library for the blind and physically handicapped. Bill number 1489, Resolution Amending Resolution 310 of 2018 to provide additional information regarding authorized lease between the city and the Pittsburgh Hispanic Development Corporation for space in 1555 Broadway Avenue. Bill number 1490, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor through the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to execute relevant agreements to implement the creation of financial empowerment centers within the city and further providing for the agreement and expenditures not to exceed $30,000 for this stated purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Finance and Law Committee. Discussion begins with Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. I just wanted to say about, you know, the PHDC moving in the Beachview. I wanted to thank our State Senator Wayne Fontana, our Law Department, the administration, a lot of people to thank, but this was a building that, you know, was renovated before I got into office, but, but wasn't filled. We had two big empty spaces, so we filled that. And if you know anything about Broadway Avenue in Beachview, it's right on the T and it's going to spark, I think, it's already sparked some things around it. So I just want to thank everybody involved and, you know, we're excited about it and it's going to put, you know, 10 or 15 people there daily, which will help with the commerce. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
And I just want to say, I share part of Broadway with Councilman Coghill. And I just want to thank him because his work in that area has been amazing. I mean, and, and he gives everyone credit, but he fails to take credit a lot of times for the things he does himself, so I just want to congratulate him as well for his work on this.
Yep, thank you. Further discussion? I would only reference Bill, forgive me, 1473 and just the great work of the Carnegie Library. What an honor it has been to be associated with that organization for the past 12 years now. And I cannot, cannot imagine this city without the, uh, the input and the influence and the service of the Carnegie Library system and happy to move this bill forward. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, uh the bills are now ready for final action and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye. When their names are called, those opposed will vote no. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Okay, the bills having received the legally required number of votes then are finally passed. Next, we move into our Committee on Public Work Services. We have our Chair, Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Madam Clerk.
We have a short agenda.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill number 1506, Reported Committee on Public Works for March 20th, 2019 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1475, Resolution Providing for an Agreement to Set Forward City Financial Obligations and Responsibilities with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for an inclusion of certain city components in Penn Dot's West Carson Street Signal Upgrade Project at a city cost not to exceed $9,050. Bill number 1476, Resolution Accepting the Dedication of a Portion of Blair Street and Hazelwood Avenue in SP 10 Hazelwood Green Specialty Plan District in the Fourth and Fifteenth Ward, Fifth Council District of the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh you've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Works Services Committee. Uh we have further discussion beginning with Councilman O'Connor on Bill 1476.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilwoman Smith for pointing this out. Uh I have a technical amendment to the bill, so I would like to make a motion to amend. The amendment's in front of everybody.
Second. Second.
He would like to amend as well.
I got a second from the dog as well, yes.
Okay, um do we have discussion on the motion and the second? Okay, Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, uh do you want to explain what you're putting in?
So this is just, um we are, we are, we are expl- uh we are accepting a road at Hazelwood Green. So, this is just, we are, we are, we are, we are accepting a road at Hazelwood Green and there is an easement that the developer has with CXX, CSX, and they're granting the Almona Partners an easement there.
Okay.
Thanks, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman. Without further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Bill is amended. Do we have further discussion on any of the other bills under our Public Work Services Committee?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman?
I just want to thank everyone for their work on West Carson Street, but I do want to say that that road, even though we've gotten, you know, tons, millions of dollars worth of work on that area, that road is still really dangerous. I think it's one of the number one most dangerous roads in the state and one of the most dangerous roads in the country. So, I really don't know what more they can do in that area, but, you know, they changed it from a roundabout and now they put a cut through and some other things through, you know, and it's still just so dangerous. And I do want to thank our Pittsburgh Police because they've been trying to enforce the speed limit there, trying to make different changes to the lighting there, but there really needs to be something much more significant done to move the traffic and move it safely. And also, we're trying to get, in some places, they, they really want some ramps to go from the, for a bike lane, and so I think that there's going to be some, some more conversations and a better look at this entire roadway from, you know, the West End Circle to, you know, all of West Carson. And we're doing East Carson, but so I'm hoping soon they'll revisit the whole entire West Carson.
Okay, thanks, Councilwoman. Further discussion on the bills under our Public Work Services Committee? Seeing none, these bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you very much. The bills then having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee On Human Resources. Our chairperson is Councilwoman Darlene Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 1507, Reported Committee On Human Resources For March 20, 2019 With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1474, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Human Resources And Civil Service To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement And Or Contract With Neo Gov. For The Upgrade And Continual Maintenance Of Software For HR, Workforce Management, Application Tracking, And Civil Service Testing And Providing For The Payment Of The Cost Thereof Not To Exceed Eighty One Thousand Ninety Six Dollars And Seventy Seven Cent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill then under our Human Resources Committee. Is there further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, this bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you very much. The bill then having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. I am proud to announce it's a boy. Evan Strasburger was born on Saturday, healthy, wealthy, and wise, weighing seven pounds, and we want to send our most sincere congratulations to our colleague, Councilwoman Strasburger, and congratulate her on her new family. I have one brief meeting announcement. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March 27, at 1:30, council members will hold an executive session, excuse me, with the City Law Department on pending legal matters. Do we have anything else that council wishes to offer at this time? Councilwoman?
I think it's going to be, well, first of all, congratulations to Councilwoman Strasburger and her family on the birth of their baby, but, you know, I thought about not saying anything about everything that's been happening over the week, but I can't. And I know, you know, I have a big mouth, so I'm just going to say...
It's a difficult time.
It's a difficult time for the city, it's a difficult time for the families, and, you know, definitely praying about, for, you know, great outcomes and changes that need to happen. But I do want to acknowledge that the protests have mostly been very peaceful, and I want to thank the people that are protesting for keeping things peaceful and staying focused on what the families requested for Antoine Rose's family. And, you know, I want to thank the, and I want to thank the DPW and the officers that are responding in the city of Pittsburgh because they have been, also been very, I think, very professional in what I've been seeing and hearing in their response. And this is not an easy time for anyone, and I talk about this all the time. In our, in our area, the police are our coaches, they tutor our children, they make sure that they're feeding our kids when, I mean, I've seen officers take money out of their own pocket and feed kids at community festivals and events, and the kids love a lot of our officers. If it weren't for them, we wouldn't have a lot of programs in our area, including football and baseball and a lot of different programs. So, for our area, sometimes the kids have a better relationship with our officers than they do with other people in the community, and so it's difficult to watch some of this now and knowing that some of those people who put their heart and soul, I mean, we have community people that volunteer alongside our officers and, you know, and sometimes it's difficult for them as well, and so, but at the same time, they have spent a lot of time building relationships in the city of Pittsburgh. And so it's difficult to watch all this because even though it didn't happen in Pittsburgh, it does affect Pittsburgh and the effect on our families or that anybody's feeling devalued in any way is really difficult to watch. And I think for me, it's difficult to watch. In our area, I think people would be surprised to know that Antoine Rose's best friend was born and raised in our area and his father owns the Village Tavern in the West End. And so I think that people would be surprised to know the connection that he had on our side of town. So, it wasn't, even though it didn't happen on our side of town or didn't happen, the city, the reach is, is far and wide. And, I mean, at the end of the day, a family lost their child and, and officer's family, however you view the verdict or not, did go through a lot, a lot of emotional stuff as well. I don't, I think the answer is very different than what we're all hearing. We're hearing a lot of different things that have to happen. I've always said I think we need universal training for officers, but I do think our officers in Pittsburgh are highly trained, and I worry that in an event like this, one event, if one terrible thing happens in our city with our officers, it's going to send everybody right over the edge and instead of anyone giving, you know, one another the benefit of the doubt. And it, it hurts me because I've seen all the efforts into building police community relationships, and I have seen a lot of benefit of those, those relationships, that relationship building. I don't know what the answer is. I just know it feels bad to see everybody hurting so much and regardless of how you felt about this, both, there are people hurting and, and a mother and a father lost their child. And so I think to me, it's just, it's just difficult to watch all around, and I'm just praying for everybody and hoping that we come together. We did call for a post-agenda on race relations in the city of Pittsburgh, and I'd like to work with Reverend Burgess and Councilwoman Lavelle if they're willing to, to schedule that and maybe start some conversations that need to happen. And I don't know what the answer is, but I know that I'm praying for a good outcome and, and a better outcome than what we've seen.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Thank you. Do we have anything else further from members? On a different topic, not to devalue the topic that the Councilwoman just brought up. Saturday was the, I believe, the 21st Annual Biscuit Bingo held by Officer Luffy down at the IBEW. Councilwoman Harris was kind enough to secure the facility for us for free, and about six hundred and so people showed up for the 21st year, and that day, Officer Luffy and all the people that, that helped her, which are dozens and dozens and dozens, raised forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in one day to distribute to a number of different animal organizations throughout the, the region. And I just want to, you know, speaking about our police officers and what they do and how they contribute and how valuable they are in building relationships, there's a model right there in Officer Christine Luffy, and I love her to death and I just, I couldn't let the money pass without recognizing the work that she's done. I think she's close to something like a little over three hundred thousand dollars in the 21 years that she has raised to support animal care. It's pretty amazing. Councilwoman, you were there.
Yeah, I was, I stopped in and saw you actually enjoying the event with a lot of people, so it's about seven, it looked like about 700 people there. It was amazing. I'd love to see, and I want to congratulate Officer Luffy and thank all the officers who volunteered and all the people that support that event every year. I would love if we could do something, maybe this is an opportunity to, you know, we, the